Good evening and welcome. Tonight I'm calling together the Monday, June 14th, 2021 Planning Commission to order. It is 6:30 PM. Tonight's Planning Commission meeting will be held virtually by using Zoom and in person while following social distancing guidelines. As the Vice Chair, I will be filling in for the Chair in leading the Planning Commission meeting, and the public is welcome to participate when invited throughout the meeting. Members of the public may attend the meeting in person or join us via online Zoom. If attendees experience audio problems, we suggest they leave the meeting and then rejoin. This usually fixes the issue. Additional instructions on how to participate are all posted online at the Burnsville website, that's burnsvillemn.gov, in the public meeting calendar. As usual, tonight's meeting is available for viewing on BCTV and at the city's website. If you're unable to participate this evening and would like to submit public testimony, I encourage you to email your comments to city staff or mail your comments directly to City Hall here in Burnsville. You may participate in the meeting tonight online by going to zoom.us/join and typing in this meeting ID, 96048728851. Once you're logged into the meeting, please use the chat feature to tell the moderator which item you wish to speak to. You may also call into the meeting tonight by calling 651-372-8299. You'll use the same meeting ID, which is 96048728851. For each public hearing, I will open up a time when the callers may speak to that item, and we'll give more instructions at that time. Your call will be muted until that time. Please note, if there may be a slight delay due to the differences in technology. If speaking by phone, please mute your computers since there might be a delay or an echo. With that, we'll move on to the agenda. The first item on tonight's agenda is adoption of said agenda. Any changes to the agenda, staff?
No changes from staff.
Any changes, Commission members? Seeing no changes, does anybody want to make a motion?
I move that we accept the, approve the agenda.
Moved by Commissioner Wad.
I second.
And second by Commissioner Anderson. All in favor, say aye. Aye. No one oppose? No one oppose, that motion carries. With that, move on to our last meeting, which was May the 17th, excuse me. And we had in our packet the record or the transcript of the meeting, the meeting minutes. There we go. Can I get a motion to accept those meeting minutes from the last meeting? Commissioner Anderson.
I would like to make a motion to approve the minutes.
Thank you, Commissioner Anderson.
I will second the motion.
Commissioner Wad seconds. Hearing, I'm assuming no discussion, all in favor, say aye. Aye. Anyone oppose? No one opposes, we'll move on. That is all taken care of, and we will move on to our first actual conditional use permit. It looks like it's a public hearing for the application of Ulysses Urzua Sanchez, I apologize if I said that name wrong, for a conditional use permit to construct a 660 square foot detached garage, which exceeds the maximum 500 square foot detached accessory structure standard of the R1 one-family residential zone at 13013 Court Place. And our city planner, Deb Garros, will be giving us a presentation. So take it, Ms. Garros.
Thank you, Commission members. This is a public hearing this evening, and it is for a detached garage in the single-family zoning district. There is a maximum 500 square foot size limit for detached accessory buildings or garages, sheds. And in this case, the applicant is proposing a 660 square foot detached garage, and they can do that provided a conditional use permit is approved. And for conditional use permits, generally, the ordinance treats those as they're considered to be permitted, but it allows Planning Commission and City Council to take a look at the individual application and determine if there are any impacts to adjacent properties or to the public, and if so, if you find that, you can add conditions to help mitigate those items. So the subject site is an R1 zoned property. To the back or the rear, there is a multifamily townhome development, otherwise, single-family units. The entire area has primarily been developed since the early to mid 1980s. The subject site is shown to the right, again, 12,000, a little bit larger than 12,000 square foot lot, so all these lots are a little bit bigger than the 10,000 square foot standard. And there is an existing single-family home, and they do have a 440 square foot attached garage. And what they're proposing to do is to have a detached garage on the southeast corner of the site. And this plan identifies the location of the building. This is a situation where the applicant did make application for a building permit last year in August for a detached garage. It was over 900 square feet, so we advised him that he would need a conditional use permit to do that. What he decided to do was he did reduce the size of the garage, but started constructing without a building permit. So we received a complaint back in around, in April this year. The Building Inspections Department went out, and indeed, the structure is under construction or has been under construction, and it was red-tagged to stop work on it until they could go through this hearing and to find out if they can get approval of their conditional use permit. So again, the maximum size is typically 500 square feet for an additional detached structure. They're proposing one that's 160 square feet bigger than that, so a total of 660 square feet. The lot area is 12,632 square feet, so again, larger than our standard 10,000 square foot lot. The zoning of the property is R1, and it's part of a planned unit development, which included a mix of different uses at the time it was approved, including single-family and some multifamily. The house was built in 1988. The setbacks that are proposed on the south, the structure is about 11 feet from the property line, the setback requirement is five feet, so they exceed the setback there. On the rear, which is toward the right, they have 14-foot setback. Typically, for a detached accessory building, you have an eight-foot setback, but in this case, there is a larger drainage and utility easement of 10 feet, so they needed to be at least that far. They are beyond that, so they are exceeding the setback requirements. These are the pictures that were taken by the building inspector when they went out. So you have the single-family home that's closest to the street, and then the entire rear yard is fenced with the white vinyl privacy fence, and then you can see the garage structure and back. And this is just another photo from the street, looking back at the garage. So we're looking at a 22 by 30 square foot garage. The building itself is, let's see here, it has a height. It meets the zoning ordinance standard for height. I just need to find where I put that.
Some previous slide.
Oh, was it? Oh, thank you. One of these? Oh, 14 feet. Okay, there we go. 14 feet is the height, and that's as measured by the zoning ordinance, which takes it from grade level to the median point when you have a pitched roof. The overall, if you were to look at just overall, if you're standing there, how tall is it? 16 and a half feet. Thank you, Regina. And a very straightforward design. They are proposing to have horizontal vinyl siding. It'll match pretty much the appearance of the single-family home. And we did receive some public comments on this. These two were included with your packet. Joseph Gelhar indicated that they did not have objections to this. Carol Van Ness submitted a letter, which was provided to the Commission, and she's indicating opposition to this. In addition to that, we received, let's see here, we received voicemail from Anna Kokesh and Raineri, again, I apologize for these, I'm sorry I butchered the name, I apologize for that, Rainer Lopez, and they're at 13025 Court Place, and they do not have any issues with the application as proposed. In looking at kind of the overall neighborhood view, directly across the street, we've got a row of single-family homes, and then it abuts the border to the city of Savage. So within the neighborhood, you basically have the single-family, and then you can see the attached multifamily units to the east. The application will be the first one for a detached garage within the area, so it is different from that aspect, but again, it's only 160 square foot larger. If they reduce that size to 500 square feet, they could just build without a conditional use permit. The recommendation from staff is we are recommending approval of the CUP as requested, the subject to the condition that they get an approved building permit before they begin any further work at the site. And with that, I can stand for questions.
Well, thank you, Ms. Garros. Any questions, Commissioners? Commissioner Anderson.
Hi, I was just wondering, are there any requirements as far as a driveway to get back to that garage? And if so, what are those?
We do not currently have any ordinance driveway requirements for these detached structures. They do have, it's maybe a little bit hard to see on here, on here, if you look, this is the north side of the garage, so it is paved back, and they do have that area where they have had cars there in the past, or it's available for like an RV or something like that. And that does go beyond the fence, but they are not required to have a separate driveway, per se, to the second garage.
So no issues with driving? I mean, I guess it's kind of up to them about driving on the grass and all that kind of stuff for...
Yeah, basically, they are going to be using this for storage, for equipment, is what they've just identified. Trampolines, outside play, equipment, those types of things. But that is all that's proposed.
Thank you.
Commissioner Wad.
Thank you, Ms. Garros. Excellent presentation, as always. Do you, is there a penalty for building without a permit? Do you, are you, do you know what it is?
I believe that they can assess a fee to that, maybe double the amount of the permit, but that is done through the inspections department.
Okay, yeah, that was my, that's what I thought, too. I was just kind of curious. So 500, if this was 500 square feet, basically, seven feet shorter, it would be allowed?
That's correct. Without the conditional use permit, yes.
Yeah, you still have to get a building permit, but the conditional use process.
Yes.
And, and it seems very tall, and it meets the code requirement. The sidewall must be about 12 feet or more high, and that's allowed by our zoning code?
Yes.
Okay, that's, that, that strikes me, but there's, you know, there's, it's allowed, so it's allowed, so I think those are my only questions. Thank you.
Thank you.
For, for the Chair, I just wanted to note that the applicant has been promoted via Zoom to answer any questions that might arise before the public hearing is opened.
Oh, great, great. Does the applicant want to say anything in his beforehand, or?
Great question.
As he does that, Ms. Garros, is it your understanding that he was mistaken when he didn't reapply for the building permit, or was that just, was it a deliberate thing? Or hard to say?
I find it hard to believe that he did not know, because I specifically stated it in my, in my recommendations and memorandum back to him. But he did, the initial building permit, the garage was going to be about 960 square feet, so even much larger. He advised the inspectors that he thought that he had cut it down to meet the ordinance, but in fact, it's still 160 square feet.
Wasn't quite enough? And even then, he did not apply for no permit?
The permit still has not been issued, that's correct.
At this time, they have not unmuted themselves to speak. They're aware that they can use that function should they have any questions to be answered.
That's fair enough. All right, with that, we will go ahead and open up the public meeting. It is 6:45. And anyone outside of here can call into the public meeting, as we stated earlier. That phone number again is 651-372-8299.
There is someone from the public that would like to speak, named Dennis.
Okay, well, Dennis, you're, you're on the line.
No, thank you, so kind of unmute yourself, please.
Can you hear me? We can now. Welcome, Dennis.
Hi, my name is Dennis Sherman. I'm the president of North Cricket Hills Townhome Association. Our property abuts the garage. It's not any kind of an eyesore for me where my unit is, but I have had complaints from some of my neighbors about the size and scope of the project. We're wondering if this is going to be a commercial building, or what kind of noise issues are going on, and a lot of the people that live here just don't like the enormity of the building. And that's all I had to say about it.
Well, thank you. Ms. Garros, we don't have any reason to believe this will be used for commercial use?
No, not at this point, based on what the applicant has indicated in their application. In, I believe, one of the letters that we received, there have been complaints in the past for this property, and they, I believe, all of the applications have been closed, or all the complaints have been closed, except for this one, which is the violation of building without the permit and the CUP. But for noise and those types of things, those would be things that if they are occurring, then residents should be contacting the police department at 9/11, and they will go out, because we do have noise standards for the neighborhoods, and that definitely can be looked into. This particular project is just to consider the detached garage, and if it can be 160 square feet larger than the 500 square foot standard. And as far as the height, for accessory buildings, the height is limited to 15 feet in the single-family zoning district, and it cannot be taller than the single-family house. So in this case, the application does meet the ordinance with respect to height.
At 14 feet, yep. Okay. Is there anyone else from the public wishing to speak on this item?
Thank you for everything.
Thank you. Thank you for joining us.
It looks like the applicant has unmuted themselves. I'm unsure if they want to speak or not.
Mr. Sanchez, the floor is yours if you'd like.
Yes, I just, I'm not planning on using the detached garage for any commercial purposes. And like I said, I just want more storage for a lot of the stuff that we have in the backyard, to make our backyard look better, basically, is what I'm trying to do. And there will be more, basically, from any type of work or whatever is going on.
Okay, thank you for clarifying that. And with that, anybody else that wishes to speak is welcome to do so at this point.
I'm not seeing anyone, Chair.
Okay, well, with that, we will go ahead and close the public hearing at 6:50. And I am going to push this back over to the Commission for any questions or anything on those lines. Commissioner Wad.
I was just gonna, just wanted to address the caller's comment about the size of the building, and I think that really gets, the reason it looks so big is because it's so tall, and the height is not at issue in this case. You know, it could be, you know, that tall and, you know, 12 feet deep instead of 30 feet deep, and it would still, you know, have that same scale, so that's maybe something we want to address elsewhere in the zoning code, but nothing we can really do about that here.
Yeah, makes not a whole lot of difference. Thank you.
If I may interrupt, I'm so sorry. So it looks like I got notification that there may be a phone caller on Zoom. If we can have that caller press star nine to unmute themselves, and if they do want to add public testimony, we may have to reopen the public hearing to allow that to happen.
Right, right, and that was my fault. I should have, I should have given that instruction. So can we reopen the public hearing at 6:51? And we would allow the caller to make their, their voice heard? And please go ahead and speak up if you're, if you're waiting.
And again, that is star nine to unmute yourself via phone. I have not seen anything.
Okay.
Thank you for your flexibility.
We'll go ahead and close the public hearing at 6:52 then. Commissioner Anderson.
Yeah, I'm, I'm wondering, can we go a couple slides ago, or maybe after this? It's, it kind of looked like some of the plans for it are very pre-made.
Yeah.
And I'm kind of wondering, I think maybe a little bit farther, there we go. So with these plans, would it not tell him what the square footage is right from the get-go? Because if, if, if the idea is maybe he just wasn't quite aware of it?
No, his initial plan showed a much larger building, like I say, up to the 900, and it was, there was, this information was provided with that permit.
This was provided with the original request for the 900?
A larger one. So he resubmitted plans to this 22 by 30, and that's what we forwarded to the Planning Commission. His initial request is for that 996 square foot, and I think it was 40 feet by something. And we advised him they could not do that.
But this is what was submitted to us, but not with, like, the argument that he thought it might have been only 500 square feet, like, he wasn't, didn't require the CUP?
I think this was submitted after, after the violation.
Yes.
Okay, but I mean, like, it was, if these plans came with what he was purchasing and planning to set up, wouldn't right away, you'd already know that it's above that 500, that square footage? I'm just kind of curious, so...
That's a fair question. Anything else, Mr. Anderson?
No, no, I just wanted to make sure that I was, that I could see it on that, in what we're looking at, if, if it did show 660 before.
Well, with that, I, I have a few things to say. First, obviously, building permits are there for a reason, and it's important that we do, we do apply for building permits ahead of time. Mr. Sanchez, obviously, this happened, I believe you would have had received some sort of punitive damage for not starting to build without the permit. That being said, from Mrs. Van Ness, who supplied a comment via email, and Mr. Sherman, who was on the call today, we're approving the, the size of the garage, that is the only thing we can look at. We really cannot use this as a punitive action for any noise complaints from the past, or, or look at anything other than the actual size and the zoning conditions of, of the garage. And for the most part, everything does fit within plans, except for the additional width and length, as Commissioner Wad pointed out. The height of the, of the garage does fit in with the zoning standards in accordance with our current zoning laws. That being said, it, it would be very difficult to vote against moving this forward. At any rate, I would entertain a motion, if anyone's ready to make one, on our decision Commissioner Anderson.
Could we go to the recommendations? I would like to make a motion that the Planning Commission recommended the City Council approval of the CUP as presented and to allow the completion of the 22 by 30 or 660 square foot detached garage subject to the following conditions. Building permit approval from the city is required prior to any additional work on the garage.
So moved by Commissioner Anderson. Do I have a second?
I...
Commissioner Wad.
Yes, I, I just wanted to make a comment before I do my second, is that there's a few more hoops to be, that Mr. Sanchez will have to jump through in terms of getting through the building permit process. So it's not, it's not all easy-peasy from here. But with that, I will second the motion.
Okay, Commissioner Anderson made the motion. Commissioner Wad seconded the motion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone oppose? Aye. And it carries two to one, and we'll move on to the... Anyone oppose? Aye. And it carries two to one and we'll move on to the city council meeting.
Um, oh dear. The June 22nd city council meeting.
June 22nd city council meeting. Well, thank you. I was going to look that up ahead of time and I didn't. All right. Thank you for all the input from the public and we are going to move to the next piece and that is a public hearing for an application of Pollock Family LLP for a conditional use permit to allow an outdoor storage use for business-related vehicles and equipment at 2,000 South Cross Drive West. And I believe that's Ms. Garros again. Ms. Garros?
Thank you, commissioners. We do have a representative here from the applicant, Mike Schaefer, who can address questions if you have them. And the subject site should look familiar to, to you. We have worked with this site for years and years. It was formerly owned by Ames Construction and then about two years ago was sold to Transit Team. And now this lot is, they're looking to get conditional use permit approval to do an outdoor storage use on the site and to, they would own that outright as the applicant, so Transit Team would not be involved. The property is zone I three, which is our office and industrial park. So outdoor storage is a permitted use. You do have to have a principal building on a lot to have outdoor storage. So the applicant is proposing to construct and this screen left is north. It's just a very long lot. So we have South Cross Drive is the curving road on the right-hand side. And then you can basically see what they're proposing to do is to pave the area for the storage lot and looking to provide opportunity for folks and contractors to store commercial-type vehicles and equipment, things that they typically aren't allowed to store at their homes based on association restrictions or even city zoning restrictions. So that's kind of the client base that they are searching out. They do have a number of folks that are interested in this already, mostly Burnsville residents and business folks. So what the application is, is for outdoor storage and they are showing 268 total parking stalls. Just to make note, these are much larger than our standard vehicle parking stalls of nine by 18 so that they can fit these larger vehicles in through here. The parking area or the storage area will have electric outlets available and that would be so that any vehicles, if they have block heaters, those types of things, diesel vehicles, can be plugged in overnight so they don't need to be running all night long. And the other improvement on the site is on the north, let's see, northeast corner, there is a retaining wall, a small section of retaining wall around the parking area. It's about three and a half feet tall. And then on the northwest corner, there is an existing stormwater pond, but they will be increasing the size of it to be able to accommodate the drainage from the site. This site had been used by Ames Construction for very heavy equipment, bridge components, large cement structures, those types of things for many years. The lot was never paved. It was not required to be paved because the pavement would have ripped up based on the large equipment that they used. So it, this will be paved. It will be improved. The site is surrounded by existing trees because it was a similar type of use before. So we do have mature trees that provide pretty much 100% screening of the site for anyone along South Cross Avenue. In terms of the site area, the site is a little over 10 acres in size. The building is a 30 by 30 or 900 square foot building. Basically, it's just going to be used for maintenance equipment for the site itself, not going to be occupied per se. In terms of green space, they are providing a little bit more overall green space than the 30% standard in the I three zone. They're providing 31%. Green space within the parking lot is a little bit different because this is mostly a storage facility. So that 8% green space standard doesn't apply to the storage facility. It applies to where the required parking is. So when you take that into account, they do provide for the 8% green space within the parking area. They're also exceeding the building perimeter landscape standard by providing 75% as opposed to the 50% standard. And again, the ordinance requires 129 stalls. They are providing 268 for, again, mostly storage purposes. The floor plan, very straightforward. The building, very straightforward. They are proposing a mix of materials. One of the items that they are requesting conditional use permit approval for is for the horizontal lap siding. That is kind of a, used partially on the sides and the front of the building and then the rear of the building. They have provided the accents and also additional types of exterior materials that are cement board type materials, asphalt shingles, and think that they have met the design requirements of the city, even though it's a very small building. In terms of the grading and erosion control, the site is fairly flat. Really, they are doing grading, again, primarily just to get the surface water to drain towards that stormwater pond. The only utilities that are proposed to be installed are the, excuse me, the stormwater lines that would be located on the west side of the lot and then back to the stormwater pond. And this is just a, an increased view of the stormwater pond and then the infiltration basin cross-section. In terms of landscaping, they are adding 44 additional trees to the site. They are adding a mix. They do meet the 25% plant diversity requirement. They are using materials that are drought resistant. So zero escaping is an upper, or an option available in the ordinance and that is to help to mitigate, you know, the amount of water and watering that is allowed. When an applicant does this, the ordinance does provide that they can do this, but we have a two-year plant, you know, guarantee that we will go out and inspect and hold a security for two seasons rather than one season. The, let's see. In addition to that, we had talked to the applicant about signage. They don't have the specific signage designed yet, but they're looking at having a monument sign. They do have another facility that has other trucking and different types of storage that's located in Ever Grove Heights. And if you want to ask, I'm sure Michael can tell you about that. In terms of the site lighting, it does meet the ordinance. They are proposing some new pole lights within the parking lot. All of the lighting though will be behind the existing evergreen trees and so there will not be impacts, lighting impacts to the adjacent properties. And then as far as the, the site, the other characteristic is that they are looking to have a new driveway access installed onto South Cross Avenue. And the location here is identified. They do provide their truck churning radius and also the site distance exhibits. With this, the applicant and the city engineer have tried to review the location and they've chosen this spot because it is a spot where there is not going to be direct conflict between the driveways for where the townhome residents enter their development to the south in this particular site. However, one of the items that the city engineer wanted to include is in the event there are crashes that occur out there and an increasing level that the driveway can be reevaluated and may need to be relocated further to the east. However, that's not necessarily optimal either because then you get the curve in the road. So they're, they're making the best of the worst, I guess, situation in terms of the access. And the recommendation from staff is we're recommending approval of the conditional use permit. We do have requirements or conditions that we've added. Several of these are really associated with the type of operation specifically. Number one is a modification to the landscape plan just to change the size standard for overstory trees from six feet tall to two and a half inch caliper and that meets the ordinance. Also to add about a foot to the proposed trash enclosure and that would make it six feet tall to meet the ordinance. Sign permit will be needed at such time as they come in for a sign application. That's standard. All light fixtures still will need to be downcast and shielded, another standard condition. Plans will need to be modified and this is one item I should have referred to a little bit back here. The ordinance calls for a barrier curb to be installed and that is the top center graphic. However, with the city engineer, they can approve surmountable or flat curb in areas where there is drainage or also to provide areas where water is to drain into like the planter locations, the planter islands. So what staff is recommending with this condition is that the areas that the city engineer approves on the north side of the lot to allow for drainage to that pond and then also drainage to the planter islands, that those be surmountable curb, but the rest would need to be barrier curb. Number six, a low-impact development lit agreement will need to be signed and that's a standard maintenance agreement for the stormwater pond. Location of the driveway, we just talked about that, that if there are crash issues in the future, they'll have to work with the city engineer and look at relocation of that driveway. Number eight is there are some minor items in the attached city engineer's review memo that still need to be addressed. So we're including those, that those be addressed by the applicant. And then as far as open storage lots, standard requirements are that the storage cannot, it, it needs to be 100% screened so it cannot exceed the height so it can be seen by other properties. And then the materials approved for the storage site are commercial vehicles and equipment as requested. The operating hours, they are proposing to have the hours, 24 hours a day, seven days per week and staff is comfortable with this. Really, they're going to have a gated structure with an access so only their tenants will be able to get in and out of the facility. And that's fairly typical for any type of storage use. And then also to make sure that always, regardless of who owns this property in the future, the conditional use permit will run with the land, but always that there is information for the property owner and the management company in the event residents or anyone from the public wants to get ahold of them about the site. So with that, I can stand for questions.
Thank you so much, Ms. Garros. Commissioner, is there any questions for Ms. Garros? Commissioner Anderson?
I was just curious, when you're referring to that 8% within the parking area, what exactly is considered the parking area? Because I know you had mentioned about like the planter islands. But based on that design, it looks law smaller than 8% if I'm looking at just those two little bumpers.
What we did is we took the area, our standard nine by 18 requirements and put that together, identified the area, the square footage that would be involved in that and then applied the green space. And they do have, a lot of the green space that applies would be surrounding the lot. Then also, they do have the two internal parking areas and, I don't know if you can see. But like by the entrance, for example, there's really a planted type island just north of, sorry, just east of the entrance there. And then also, when you look to the east, they have the four parking spaces and then there's an area on both sides that are planted. All of those count towards that interior parking space.
Okay, perfect. Thank you.
Anything else, Commissioner Anderson? Okay, I'll hand it over to Commissioner Awad.
Yeah, thank you, Ms. Garros, for another great presentation. And this seems like kind of a perfect use for this site. So that's nice to see. My only comment is that condition number seven, it says that the driveway, at least in our printed material, shall be relocated further west and I think you mean to say further east. So I just wanted to point that out before we, this becomes memorialized and, thank you, that's it.
Official transcript. Thank you, Commissioner Awad, for clarifying. That's great. All right, this is a public hearing, so I will go ahead and open up that public hearing. It is seven eleven. And anyone that wishes to speak to the public hearing can either step forward. It looks like the applicant is here. Sir, can you state your name and your address for the record, please?
Yeah, thank you for taking the time. My name is Mike Schaefer. I'm at 12066 Gantry Lane in Apple Valley. I'm sorry, it's not Burnsville, Apple Valley.
We'll let it go.
Thank you, thank you. Oh, I appreciate it. I think Deb Garros did a great presentation in explaining what we're trying to accomplish. Sorry, I'm hearing feedback. I don't know if you guys are hearing that?
Yeah.
All right. My only question, and actually, is I would like the commissioners to consider one of the conditions and recommendations from the city, number five, related to the curbing at the property. So the city has made recommendation and planning has made recommendation to change to the six-inch lift curb as opposed to the insurmountable curb that we had in our original plans. The reason we wanted the insurmountable curb is the parking spaces are actually going to be 70 feet long. So they're 11 by 70, just to accommodate, because we rent to an unknown customer, we maximize those spaces so they can park as large of a vehicle as, as necessary. But when we're doing snow clearing, it's almost impossible to draw snow out of 11-foot wide by 70-foot space. So I'd like to ask the commissioners to either consider removing that condition because we'd like to do the insurmountable curb to allow us to push snow beyond the lot. We're going to have 15 feet from that curb to our property line. So in conditions where we have minimal amounts of snow, it's a non-issue, we'll be able to pull that out. But if we have large storms, it's very difficult to, if there's a truck, for example, on each side and an open spot in the middle, to draw 70 feet back and then push that to the pond or wherever we'll have for storage spaces. So I'd just like to ask the commissioners to consider dropping that one condition, but otherwise, we appreciate all the time and help going through this process.
Thank you, Mr. Schaefer. Luckily, we have our, one of our city engineers with us, Sarah Lloyd. Sarah, could you speak to the reason behind the curb?
The reason behind that curb really is strictly that that's just the code for that, for this type of a parking lot. So I think that would be a decision by the city, your city engineer or the council to make that decision.
So it'd be okay to go ahead and change that piece without you?
I know, it is, it is, it is not, it's not okay.
We'd have to come back for a full.
Okay, got it. All right, well, thank you. Anybody else online or in person to speak to this issue?
Chair, I believe we still have a person that is attending via phone. If this person can indicate that they want to speak by pressing star nine, that would be great. And once you do that, then the moderator can unmute them.
We'll give it a little bit of time here.
So far, no indication.
Okay. Well, then we'll go ahead and close the public hearing at seven fifteen. And we will go to the commission to make any comments, questions, or concerns. Commissioners, Commissioner Awad?
So just a point of clarification, we cannot remove the, the condition number five to eliminate the barrier curb and allow the surmountable curb? That's not something that we can do here, is that correct?
That's correct. The only way to do that would be through a variance. It'd be very difficult for a variance because it needs to be something that is a practical difficulty, you know, not created by the application. And the city engineer certainly can work with the applicant if there are areas for snow storage that they want to identify, I think, and to, you know, allow some additional area of surmountable. But the rest of the area would need to be that barrier curb.
Okay.
It's just a minimum standard that the city has, so.
So if they want to. So if they want to get rid of that, they'd have to make a separate application to do that, it can't really happen in the COP?
Yes.
Okay.
Correct. I did also want to note, one thing I inadvertently left out is we did have a neighborhood meeting. We sent out about 258 letters. The meeting was a virtual meeting because of the COVID situation, and it was held on June 1st. We did not have anybody attend the meeting, but we tried.
Give it your best effort. Any other comments or questions from the commissioners? Commissioner Wad?
No other comment, I will propose a motion if, if this seems like a good time to do that?
I believe it is.
It's the next step in the process?
It is the next step in the process.
Okay. I move that we recommend to the planning, that we recommend to the city council approval of the conditional use permit to allow an outdoor storage use for business-related vehicles and equipment, and the use of horizontal aluminum lap siding at 2000 South Cross Drive West, subject to the 12 conditions listed.
Commissioner Wad made a motion, and do I have a second?
I second.
Commissioner Anderson seconds. With that, we will go to a vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Anyone oppose? I don't believe anybody can. With that, we will go ahead and say that went through. Thank you so much for showing up tonight, and thank you for choosing Burnsville. I think you'll enjoy working with us. And that brings us to the next item on our agenda, and it looks like another public hearing, and it's for an application of United Properties for an interim use permit, amendment, excuse me. And this is going to our other city planner, Ms. Madden, Sarah Madden.
Thank you, Chair. Good evening, planning commissioners. So tonight's proposal is an amendment to an application that was just recently heard by the planning commission and city council about a month or so ago, at the end of April and early May. So this application, the original interim use permit, did receive approval, and then after the city council meeting, some new information arrived where we noted that we needed to bring it back to amend one of the conditions of the interim use permit. So the subject site, just to refresh your memory, is the United Properties Phase Four Development. This building is currently under construction. It was approved as a planned unit development and preliminary and final plan in 2019, and the interim use permit at that time had expired, which caused the United Properties Group to come back in to request a new interim use permit, which the public hearing was held on April 26th. It made it through the city council approval process, and again, this is an amendment of that interim use permit to provide a new outdoor storage plan and to remove one of the conditions. So the insisting outdoor storage area is, this is the plan that was originally approved in 2019 and approved again earlier this spring, and so there are no changes to the scope of the outdoor storage area. For square footage, there are no changes to the materials that are proposed to be stored. The changes are specifically to just a new request from one of the prospective tenants to update their portion of the outdoor storage area and provide more information, and to remove a condition related to the height of the materials that are stored. So the prospective tenant for the building is requesting to be able to store the storage container pods portion of the approval, three high, which would equate to about 24 feet in height. The building itself, as part of the approved building permit, is shown to be taller than that at an estimated 28 feet in height, so it would be screened from public view by the building. There was a condition on the previous interim use permit that the height of the materials not exceed the height of the screening fence. So that is the condition that is proposed to be removed as part of this amendment. So there are still screening measures in place. The 2019 planned unit development and the building permit proposal does have the enhanced landscaping materials for screening of the outdoor storage area, and the proposed screening fences also proposed to remain the same. So this is just to update the outdoor storage plan for the portion of the storage that is allocated to this prospective tenant. The second tenant that was referenced in the April version of the interim use permit for wooden pallets and related landscaping, that is not proposed to change, there's still room within the total outdoor storage area for, for their portion of the proposed outdoor storage area. So with that, we are recommending approval of the application. The, just to go back over the conditions, so the conditions of the previously approved interim use permit are going to remain in effect. The change with this amendment is that the condition which stated that the materials stored inside of the outdoor storage area shall not exceed the height of the screening fence has been removed as they are screened by the building. And the terms, as mentioned, the terms of the interim use permit have not changed for the area of the storage or the length of the storage that has not been requested by the applicant. So this is a public hearing this evening, and the, a member from the applicant group is on the Zoom meeting, if there are any questions for them.
Great, thank you, Ms. Lloyd. Ms. Lloyd, excuse me, too many saras. Ms. Madden. With that, I will hand it over to the commissioners. You have any comments, questions from Ms. Madden? Seeing none, we can open up the public hearing. It is 7:22, according to my watch. We'd be happy to have the applicant speak to us as well, and if you're on the phone, you can press a star nine to unmute yourself and let us know that you are here.
Hello, I'm here, can you hear me?
We can. Can you start by giving us your name and address, please, for the record?
My name is Connor McCarthy, and my address is 651 Nicollet Mall, Minneapolis.
Well, thank you, Mr. McCarthy. Would, go ahead.
Well, I want to say thank you to the, to, a big thank you to Sarah Madden for working with us throughout the past three years now on this project, and we're really excited, we're under construction, and if you've driven by recently, within the last few days, you'll see that our, our building is, is going vertical now, so it's an exciting time for us, and appreciate the flexibility. We've been back here a couple of times and feel that we are very close to finalizing a deal here with this tenant with this request, and we'd be very pleased with, with the project. So appreciate it, and I'm here to answer questions.
Thank you so much, Mr. McCarthy. I did, I would, did go past the building, and I was, it was, it was a big change, so I'm excited for you. That is great that we're moving forward on that. Commissioners, do you have any questions for the applicant at all, by chance? No? Well, we appreciate you coming tonight. It doesn't sound like anybody has any questions. It seems like a pretty, pretty open, open proceeding altogether. Thank you for joining us tonight, and I just want to open the floor to anybody else in the public hearing here that would like to speak to this issue.
Chair, there is no one else online at this time.
Well, with that, then we'll, we'll go ahead and close the public hearing at 7:24. All right, with that, I'm going to go back to the commissioners and ask if there's any other final comments, questions, concerns, or motions that you'd like to bring up. Commissioner Anderson?
Ah, I have no more questions, comments, or concerns, and was hoping to recommend to the city council approval of the application of 35 South Industrial Owner LLC for an interim use permit amendment for outdoor storage of wooden pallets and storage container pods at the Burnsville Industrial Phase Four Development located at 1750 126th Street West, subject to the following two conditions.
Very professional, thank you so much, Commissioner Anderson. We have a motion, do we have a second?
I will second, second the motion, thank you.
Okay, a motion by Commissioner Anderson, seconded by Commissioner Wad. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone oppose? I don't believe so. With that, this will move on to the city council meeting on June the 22nd. And with that, we are moving on to the next item on our agenda, and we are very excited to have city council member Schultz join us tonight. And she's going to discuss some of the, I believe, the zoning changes, and I believe, Regina Dean, you're going to take this one for us?
Yeah, I'll kick it off. So Chair, thank you, council member Schultz for attending tonight. Other members of the commission, thank you. So first thing, before when council member Workman was your council liaison, we started doing these quarterly meetings, and then there was a shift in council liaison to the planning commission, so now we have council member Schultz. So if you want to continue those quarterly meetings, that's something that, you know, we can certainly talk about today as we have council member Schultz in front of us. And then the other item, really the agenda item, was to, to bring up the zoning code and subdivision review. So we've had some feedback through the council, through the all-day work session that was, that was held back in, I think that was the end of February, and then some other dialogue that had occurred during council interviews for the task force. And what we've heard are some pretty high-level themes as far as the changes that council wants to see, not only in the zoning code and subdivision change, but the full city code. So we're talking about plain language, making things more flexible, more user-friendly, relaxing our sign ordinance. There were some changes that we did in, as a reaction to COVID, and businesses being shut down, and we relaxed our temporary sign ordinances, so keeping that in mind as far as relaxation of our temporary sign ordinances going forward. Simplifying language, using Crystal, the city of Crystal as a model. Couple of years ago, they went through a full city code update and changes as well, so looking to them as kind of a model, not only for the code, but the full city code, but also zoning and, and the subdivision as well. There was also some comments that were, I believe, received through the, the task force interviews. That question that was posed was, do you, as a, as a potential task force member or pointee, do you feel that we should do an incremental change to the city code? So looking at, like each, looking at the, the full city code kind of as-is, and making changes kind of per chapter or per theme, or do you just want to say, let's throw it out, you know, throw out the book and start from scratch? And what we've heard, what I've heard from council, through Melanie, through our, our city manager, is that we want to take an incremental approach. And, and that's what I've heard from the council as a whole. So with that, I do want to recognize council member Schultz as the liaison, open it up to her to have a discussion and dialogue. I do want to note that any, if we get into, start getting into like details and things that have not been discussed at all, that kind of these new, new ideas that might come out from tonight, that we may need to go to the full city council at a work session, and, and whether it's a joint work session, or staff kind of talking through these items with council to get you more feedback, we're, we're open to that. So with that, I'll, I don't know if Chair, if you want to start out any discussion, or or council member Schultz?
Thank you, Ms. Dean. I'll, I'll give the floor to council member Schultz.
Thank you. So I do want to clarify that question. The question that was asked was a, a question designed to get a person's thought process so that we could have a variety of persons and perspectives and thought processes on, on the group. It was not to give direction, and it was not to seek direction. So it, although I can, I can completely understand why a person would, would interpret it that way, but that was a thought process question of, we wanted a mix of people who, some people were, were a little more cautious and very detail-oriented, they want to do things very methodical, and other people really want to push the envelope, right? So if you get that really good mix on there, you're going to end up with a better end product, and, and that's what we were, were seeking to do. This is literally a once-in-a-lifetime opportunity, and I do want to impress that upon not just our citizens' commission, but also on you. We're giving you basically carte blanche to look at everything within all of our code and, and our regulations, all of it, and to decide what do we want our community agreements to be going forward. And we want you guys, as planning commission, and also our task force, who are our, our citizens, to do that. So we're handing that over to you because, you know, we can, we can trust you with that, right? You trust city council, city council trusts you. That's how that works, right? So this is your opportunity to really go through and examine, and Regina was absolutely correct. We do want it modernized. We do want it in language that the average person can understand. We also realize as a, as a city ages, you put Band-Aids and fixes and refer to this, and then refer to that, and then it refers to this, and then it refers to that, but go to this section first. Yikes! So some of it may be just, you know, you'll have to just bring it all back and, and say, okay, this section, we, we just have to have this very neat and concise and, and easy to understand. We also want you to have a eye to, is this necessary? Does it serve a purpose? And not, do you think it serves a purpose, but do you have information that you can rely upon that it actually does serve a purpose? One of the examples that was given during the interview process was, if a person says, this can affect property values. It may, but it may just be a perception that it affects property value. And we do want to know, you know, is there information that you can rely upon for that? So it is a heavy lift, but it's a really, really exciting one. And so we are hoping that you, you embrace it in the spirit that, that we're putting this forward. You know, part of our, our city motto now is that we're going to be boldly leading, and there are cities watching us to see how we come out of this process and the benefits that we receive on it, and then they're looking at copying what we do with the citizens' commission. So that's also very exciting. So it's not just cities in Minnesota, we've been contacted by cities outside of Minnesota as well. So this is pretty dang exciting. So do you have any questions?
And council member Schultz, if you want to sit up here with us to have more of a conversation, you're more than welcome. I, I envisioned tonight's meeting that, that we were going to be at the tables, and it would be more conversational, so if you feel more comfortable being up here, you're more than welcome, or down there is fine, too.
Doesn't matter to me, whatever you guys want, I, I'm your guest.
Well, I really appreciate that, and I, exciting is exactly the right words for it, it is, it could be, it could be really great. I want to open up the floor, I want it to be a conversation like, like we're saying, so let's throw away all the protocols of city meetings, and please feel free to open up, ask questions, and, and talk this over with everybody. Does anybody have any questions, or I feel like I'm being very controlled here. Go ahead.
This process has, has begun, is that, in terms of reevaluating the city code, this, this is something that has already started right over.
So we do have our, task force has been notified. We had 43 people, I think actually interviewed, we had more than that applied, but we had, I think, 43 that interviewed. So there was a great deal of interest in it from our community. And then we picked, based off interviews, we selected 15, 15 community members that not only had a, a range in, I guess, risk tolerance, we'll put it that way, but also a range in ages, how long they've lived in the city. I mean, one person we picked, they've only been here a couple weeks. So, you know, we, we wanted to get as big of a range of backgrounds, experiences, all of that, as we could for that citizen task force. So, yeah.
So the process is just beginning?
Just beginning. And for them, it's an 18-month, maybe a little more commitment.
That's really neat that we have somebody that's that brand-new, fresh eyes on the whole thing, right? I mean, it's perfect.
Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah, fresh eyes are good.
And how many, how many members are on this task force?
15.
15, yeah, you said that, sorry. Okay. Yeah, that's something I really like being a part of. I like being able to help build up this city, so I think this is a great thing. I like being able to help build up this city, so I think this is a great thing. Any direction for us that you have or, I mean, you said the sky's the limit, but are there there are items that you would hope we would focus on?
You know, I I I do want you to go through all of it.
Okay.
Right? Some of it may only require a glance. Some of it may require further digging, but that's going to be up to you. This really is being handed over to you.
That's a lot of responsibility.
It's exciting, but it's kind of daunting, isn't it?
Yeah, yeah. A little weight, that's okay.
Yeah.
Anybody else have anything?
How far like into the weeds can we go with some of these things? I mean, what can we, are there rules like what we can and cannot change or, because you're saying like it could go, it's kind of up to you?
I think as long as we're, what I'm hearing is as long as we're within state statute, any federal laws, that you can really take a fresh look and be innovative, like Councilmember Schultz said, be bold. Let's, you know, we're going to be, from a a zoning and subdivision standpoint, we're going to be getting some community feedback as well through community surveys, in-person kind of focus groups and and other ways to kind, and we'll be supplying you with that feedback to help, you know, inform any decisions. But, you know, if you come across a a cool idea that that's going on in a different city, a different state, and and you want to, you know, open that up for discussion with your colleagues on the commission, bring it up.
I have a feeling that city attorney would speak up if we were breaking any laws or anything like that.
He'll be like, wait, wait. And you know, and you can ask him for guidance. You can also ask city council for guidance. You know, if you're if you're getting in an area and you're and you're just kind of wondering, are we, like, are we going into crazy land? You know, just let us know. Let me know. If it's something that city council has already discussed and, you know, we kind of know that thing, I can give you that information. Otherwise, yeah, we can throw it to city council in a work session and just, you know, have a quick discussion over it. But but we really do want you guys to to have this, to have this and for our our citizen task force to have this. You know, it's, you're you're looking at what Burnsville is going to be like in the future. You know, what you're doing is going to guide Burnsville for probably the next thirty to forty years. So you're going to be helping shape that direction.
That is really neat.
Pretty exciting.
Pretty exciting, yeah. Which, and it's a good segue there when you say, meeting with council or or with you as the liaison, how do you feel about a quarterly meeting with us?
Yeah, absolutely.
Okay.
Whatever you guys are looking for, I will be as active or stand back as as you guys wish.
I know Chair Timmerman wanted to have quarterly meetings, so I would I would definitely entertain doing that. And especially with the size of a project, a year and a half, there might be some work sessions where we would join council.
Absolutely. Yeah, yeah. And we are looking at whatever you need as far as as working with us on this, we're willing to make that happen.
And I speak for the others, but I hope you guys agree with that and that thought process.
Yeah, absolutely. Yeah.
Good, good. Sounds great. Anybody else have anything or?
I was just going to say, maybe Regina, you could provide some clarification on the timeline of the zoning and subdivision separate from the full city code update, which is reviewed by the task force.
So we are kind of doing some behind-the-scenes homework right now with the zoning code and subdivision. So our consultants providing us a full timeline that not only shows the different planning commission and council meetings and public outreach, but then also what we're doing behind the scenes as far as getting chapters to review as a staff, getting comments to you. We're probably not going to be before you until August with those changes now. And our first batch of of red lines that we're going to bring to have to do with residential sections of the city code, so R1, R2, R3, R3B, all of them. And that will be your your first set of homework to react to. There's going to be some back and forth with that. And then we'll move into the different subjects like industrial and business and and different themes as well. That's really kicking off behind the scenes as far as coordination with the city code task force. They are just really getting started. City manager is waiting on a timeline from me, from our consultant, so that she could create that timeline for the task force to work with. So that's just like literally kicking off today. And she'll be working with that. The goal is that the task for, the city code task force will be meeting monthly and there will be some cross-pollination as far as we're going to do our best to line up the themes. For example, you may be covering something that deals with setbacks of accessory structures and the city code task force may be looking at chickens and setbacks of chicken coops.
And ducks.
And ducks and things like that. So we may want to kind of join those conversations together or some of those themes together at times. It may be special events and that kind of crosses over zoning and land use with other items or alcohol sales and licensing with our business districts. And so there will be some crossover. There will be some opportunities for some interaction, I think. So, yeah, just to, it like Councilmember Schultz said, eighteen months plus.
Yes. Yeah, it was a minimum eighteen-month commitment. And cannot thank staff enough. This, this is not only a heavy lift for our task force and for our planning commission, also for our staff. Almost every area of our staff is going to be involved in this as well. And so although their area is not to set policy, their assistance is also going to help shape the future of Burnsville for the next thirty to forty years. So get cozy, everyone, we're going to work in together.
Their their experience and their expertise, really, I would say, to add that there.
Yeah.
Because we wouldn't be able to do any of this without them, for sure. So appreciate pointing that out. And you said that city of Crystal already did something like this.
Yeah, I think they've been complete, I want to say for about two years now, but they they did both, they separated it to the zoning code and I don't know if they did the subdivision or how that was integrated, but it was a, I don't know, eighteen-month or so long process led by the city manager and I believe their city attorney and they had a task force similar to what we're set up. And we we have had some conversations, kind of staff to staff, to see, how did that process work and what were the lessons learned? And and so we're we're taking a lot of kind of guidance from from them on this. So they're, yeah, it'll be.
Yeah, I heard about it from a friend of mine who is on city council on Crystal. And she told me about it when they were first starting the project and I was like, holy cow. And then watched this process as it went through and then I started to look at what they had before compared to what they have now, and it is a very stark difference. I mean, you can look at it now and it's easy to find, easy to read, but they did have things that absolutely they, things they may have wanted to do a little different things to watch out for, that kind of thing. So it was really good to have our staff talking with their staff. So while we're doing something amazing and exciting and all that kind of stuff, it's you're not totally trailblazing completely on your own.
That's probably better.
Yeah. Well, you always want to be the second mouse getting the cheese at the trap, right? Yeah, yeah.
First guy got hit.
Right, yeah.
Perhaps for some of the planning commissioners, what Crystal did, if you've heard reference to unified development codes, that's really what they did. So that unlike our city code that's got, you know, licenses here in this chapter and then zoning here and, you know, building inspections here and everything is in these separate parts, Unified Development Code tries to incorporate all of those aspects into, you know, like a one-stop shop, you know, type of thing where everything is, you know, unified and makes sense together. So I think that's kind of the direction.
Yeah, it's it's looking at it from kind of a more holistic way, realizing that all of these things really aren't separate. They're not. Like, they all fit together. And it was neat. And I'm sure, I know staff will be getting like a copy of, just so you can peek, just like a couple of sections of what it looked like before, what it looks like now, to kind of give you that. And it's not that we're copying that exactly, right? This is your deal. But just so you can see that neat pathway of what it was before, you know, which is patch after patch after patch, refer, 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 and then what they ended up with. And I I think seeing that, seeing a little bit of that end product definitely helped council make the decision to go forward with this.
Sounds very good. Yeah, very excited about that. I feel like I have a ton of questions, but yeah, don't know. Don't want to keep you all night.
I'm sure once we get started, like we discussed today, there, I'm sure there will be opportunities where we'll want to have that conversation with council on a very specific topic or, you know, kind of a series of topics where we want to get input and dialogue and discussion, but
Yeah.
We'll get there.
All right.
We get in the weeds, for sure.
So the first, you mentioned August, is that that's when we're going to start to see stuff about residential and subdivision? Great.
Residential, for sure.
Yeah, I'm excited about the residential part. So I'll do some thinking about the way I wish it were. So I have a way to respond.
We heard you brought up some ideas, ideas today, I think, that you kind of alluded to with accessory structures.
Height of accessory structure sidewall, exactly.
I took note of that one. I was like, I kind of see where he's going with this. Make a note. Great.
Great.
Well, thank you.
Yeah, thank you so much for joining us today. I really appreciate it and look forward to working with you in the future as our liaison as well.
Absolutely, and thank you so much for signing on to this crazy project. Let's do it.
All in. All right, we'll bring it back to meeting style and I am going to go back to our planning, our city planners, any updates?
Okay, so your next meeting will be on June twenty-eighth, six thirty PM, like normal here in the city council chamber. So far, we have one public hearing scheduled for that meeting, which is the application of MWF properties for two multifamily or two apartment buildings, one that is senior and one that is market rate multifamily in heart of the city area. And these items that were on public hearing tonight will be at the June twenty-second city council meeting.
Great deal.
I just have a note, Chair, Vice Chair. An email was sent regarding the Urban Land Institute, a training opportunity that was also sent to our Economic Development Commission. If you do have interest, just coordinate with city staff and we'll get you signed up for that.
Yeah, I'm planning on signing up, yeah. Commissioners, do you have any updates or anything you want to add? Okay. Well, that brings us to the very end of our agenda. Anybody have any motions to make? Commissioner Watt?
I move that we adjourn.
Commissioner Watt moves that we adjourn. Any seconds?
I second.
Commissioner Anderson, seconds. All in favor, say aye. Aye. And we are adjourned, seven fifty. Thank you so much, everybody. Have a great night.